To the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School School Committee of May 12, 2021. For Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law GLC 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. This meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom technology for instructions to follow this meeting live. See the notice of meeting posted on whittier tech.org. I'm gonna do a roll call attendance. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker. Mr. Irving.
Here.
Dr. Testaverde.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
James.
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Here.
This is true. Mr. Uh, Mr. LoSage. And I am president.
Can we make the floor? There are eight of us.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Public comment. Is there any public comment? None being heard. Uh, approval of minutes. Minutes of annual organizational meeting.
One more second.
Questions, discussion. Uh, we have to do a roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Minutes of the, uh, public hearing, April 14th, budget.
Move to accept.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Ms. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
April 14th, minutes of the executive session.
Regular minutes, regular minutes.
Oh, regular minutes.
Move to accept.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Now, minutes of the executive session for April 14th.
Move to accept.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Treasury Report, April.
Move to accept.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Ms. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Multiple business. Uh, the school committee self-evaluation, we had 12 returns. Are there any questions, comments from anybody on that?
Did the last three or four not get recorded? I think there were like nine. Under the, um, the graph, it looked like nine, so the other three weren't recorded.
It was nine.
No.
No, there were twelve.
There were twelve?
Yeah.
Or eleven and one.
Or eleven. Eleven, eleven and twelve, yeah.
Yeah, twelve.
Looks like sometimes eleven, sometimes twelve, so people might have skipped some questions.
Oh, that, that's right, yeah. Reports of communication. Our student representative, Alyssa.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all of the school committee members. The chess club will be meeting in the library after school on Thursday from two to three. Last week, they had eighteen players, and this week they will likely have more. The club has grown a lot throughout the year. Peer leaders will be raising money to participate in the Wildcat Walk on May 20th. This will support the American Cancer Society. They will also begin recruiting students to join next year. The multicultural club is using their club funds to purchase T-shirts for their members. Also, they're continuing to explore and discuss healthy ways to practice bystander intervention when faced with hate speech or bullying. DECO will be meeting virtually next week to discuss competition categories and dates for the 2021, 2022 school year. Interact is hosting a Wildcat Walk after school on Thursday, May 20th. Walkers are asked to get a $10 sponsor to participate. Students can walk virtually as well. All donations received by the Wildcat Walk will be made to the Relay for Life of Greater Havel. The United Nations Club is preparing for the next online virtual model unit, United Nations Conference, to be held on Saturday, May 15th. Students will be debating global climate change, freedom of the press, and protection of journalists and healthcare for indigenous people. GSA has begun meeting in person after school on Tuesdays. They are planning GSA activities to celebrate their graduating GSA seniors as well as pride events. Applications closed for the GSA state leadership on Friday. Student government has held two in-person meetings and successfully distributed a small token of appreciation to the Teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week last week. They look forward to planning something for the upcoming Memorial Day holiday and organizing student elections. Wrestling has 24 candidates. Their first match is this week at Masco versus Masco and Greater Lawrence. They are practicing at Northern Essex Community College after school and will be traveling for all meets due to the gymnasium space being used for lunches. Girls Lacrosse has twenty players on the roster, thirteen from Whittier and seven from Amesbury. The team is practicing with much enthusiasm and will be better, very competitive in most games. The Whittier Varsity Baseball Team has started the year 2-0 with two wins over Greater Lawrence. There are nine seniors on the team, and the boys are very excited to be back on the field after missing a season last year. The girls softball team had their season opener yesterday at Essex Tech and posted a convincing win by beating Essex 10-1. They will be having their first home game on Saturday morning. Players and coaches are excited to be back on the field. The varsity boys lacrosse team is off to a fantastic start. They are 2-0 and have 22 student, student athletes. The team is very excited to be back on the field playing competitively. Boys track is coming together well. They have some young talent and are looking forward to their first meet on Thursday. The girls track and field team have many solid athletes participating in a variety of events. As they enter their third week of practice, they're getting ready for their first meet this Thursday against Greater Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or?
So I'd just like to say something. This is the first time she sat at this desk all year. So this is the first time she, she didn't even get the, uh, what we're gonna do with Ryan. She didn't get the transition time because the school year just ended last year. So thank you for at least coming for your first one and your last one here at school, and thank you for, for getting online and meeting with us. We really do appreciate that. So, um, we have a little gift for her.
Oh.
Thank you so much. Good luck next year.
Thank you.
A little something for you.
Thank you.
Um, and next, we would like to introduce next year's committee rep, Ryan Link. Now, I know Ryan a little bit because Ryan and I traveled to Kentucky last year for Skills USA. And I think you, did you win a medal this year already in skills?
Yes, I got gold at states.
Nice.
Wow, congratulations.
What is it?
Gold, gold medal.
Gold.
So I have, I have a few things. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Lynch, and School Committee. Just Ryan, I know, uh, so I can toot his horn a little bit here. His father's a April 5th, he's a April kid. Skills USA State Rep-elect last year. Skills USA National 219 Voting Delegate. He's on our chess club. Advanced Manufacturing Gold at Districts and States. And CNC Turning State Comp in the Nationals, right? And add on whatever you want, but welcome.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name's Ryan. I am a junior at Whittier Tech in Advanced Manufacturing, and I am quite involved in quite a few of the clubs. As he's already mentioned, I'm involved in the chess club here. I did the First Robotics Club a few years back. It was my freshman year, actually. And as he said, uh, pretty involved with Skills USA. Uh, I go to quite a bit of the competitions there.
So the leadership program that Ryan was in, Skills USA at the Nationals, was very intense, and I, I know you understand. It's a very intense program, and you know, when we went, the kids were really in that leadership program, were in leadership program from seven till like 11 o'clock at night. We never, we never really saw Ryan too much. Um, so we're looking forward to working with you, Ryan.
I look forward to working with all you in the future as well.
Thanks, Ryan. Welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Um, tonight for informational purposes, I have personnel actions. I have hires for the April Vacation Boot Camp. Sounds like it's a physical program, but it's really not. The curriculum design team, spring coaches, which we're thrilled, has been going off without a hitch at this point. Um, and we have resignations of hospitality instructor and a maintenance mechanic. Um, as far as the budget update, as of today, Merrimack, Newberry, and Raleigh have approved our budget. Um, this week, Ips, Ips Switch meeting is on Saturday, and Salisbury has a meeting on Monday. And then the following Saturday is West Newberry, so we hope to have a, a budget, um, by the beginning of June. MCAS update, we completed two of our, of our math MCAS exams for sophomores. Um, next week sophomore students will be participating in the English exam, and freshmen will be participating in the science MCAS exam on June 8th and 9th. On Monday, April 26th, I attended the MAVA's Officers' Remote Meeting. The Executive Director of MAVA has resigned in the process of looking for a new Executive Director, as well as reorganization of the organ, reorganization of the group. On April 26th, I attended the Merrimack Town Meeting with Kara Cosmas. The meeting was held here at Whittier Tech. Um, we had a large enough facility that they asked if they could borrow our facility and have their, their town meeting here. On April 27th, I attended the Remote AVTE meeting to discuss MSBA, Mass. School Building Authority reimbursement for vocational schools. On Tuesday, April 26th, I attended a call with Jeff Riley, Dussie Commissioner, along with all the superintendents in the Commonwealth. We are provided with more guidance on close contacts and the need to return all of our students to school, which I'm happy to say we have done. On Thursday, April 29th, I attended the remote meeting with the General Advisory Board, Chairpersons and School Committee Members. I want to thank all committee members that were able to attend, and Paul Moskovich for organizing this event. On Friday, April 30th, I attended the MAVA Virtual Board of Directors Meeting. On Thursday, May 6th, I attended the Remote Curative Outreach Vaccine Site Meeting along with Patty Lowell and the City of Hayrow. We are going to try to organize a clinic here at the school for students if parents are interested in consenting to the vaccine. We have many end-of-the-year activities that are being organized to meet the COVID guidelines from Massachusetts Department of Public Health, including a prom, sports banquet, and graduation. As the guidelines change, so do our plans. So our senior formal is on May 25th. It will be out on the football fields. We have a senior sports banquet on May 27th planned, and graduation is on June 3rd. Are there any questions I can answer?
What's the time of the graduation?
It's still changing, so we're looking either seven or 7:30.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a total graduation or?
Yep, we'll have a regular graduation, three feet apart. It, right now, it's, it's either two or four guests. We're still doing the math as far as how many people we can put on the, on the young field.
Superintendent, do we have any more information on the vaccine clinics or?
So we are planning on doing a vaccine clinic here that I believe the dates, I want to say May 21st. But we're gonna work with parents. We're gonna send out information. We're gonna send out flyers, make sure people.
As of today, you're gonna have, um, anybody that's even borderline middle to, to high school, so probably the whole school should be able to be vaccinated.
If they choose to be.
If they choose to.
Any other questions?
Have you had any feedback from the parents regarding the opening it up to the teenagers for vaccinations?
We haven't as of yet. Um, you know, it's, we're having a voluntary clinic here, so we, we're gonna have it, um, I think, I think, May 21st and the next one so that they can have their three or four weeks so that they can get their second dose here at the school. We will see. I'll see.
Is the graduation normal?
Well, as normal.
You'll be handing each student of the diploma?
That is our plan. Any other questions? So at this point, I need a vote on school choice. Um, at this point, I recommend not to accept any school choice students for the 21, 22 school year. The committee does the committee does agree to allow students who have already started and moved out of the district to remain at Whittier Tech, which is what we have done the last three or four years.
Move to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Any further discussion or questions?
Do we have any school choice students this year?
I want to say two or three, Kara. Oh, six.
Six? Okay.
Six, wow.
What, that are graduating?
No, that are here within, that are here.
Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call vote for that. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Um, and if I can do one more thing before we get to the Director of People Personnel. The Department of Education is looking for feedback on the new possible regulation changes. So Lisa did forward you a letter that I would like the school committee to sign, or Mr. Murphy to sign on behalf of the school committee. Um, are there any questions I can answer? Mr. Murphy can answer.
Frankly, it, it is a very tough situation, having been involved in admissions many years. It's tough. Cause I think we do a terrific job in our, and what we've done for years.
Yep, I think at the end of the day, it's all about us providing access to vocational technical education to all of the students in our 11 cities and towns.
Yes, I agree with you.
And making sure that they're aware of the programs that we have here at the school um, and how to proceed with the application process. You know, and continuing outreach, I think is, is really important as well.
I just say that the edits that you made, I'm totally on board with, I'm just curious if your peers are kind of in the same boat or?
So those aren't edits I made. Those are edits that the department made.
Okay.
So.
Your response to?
No, that's, that's the Dussie response. I mean, at the, what they're looking to make sure is that students that have a minor infraction at school still have an opportunity to attend a vocational school. That that one discipline infraction isn't going to hurt their chances of attending a vocational technical school. And the same thing about attendance. If a student has been ill, they don't want that to hurt a student attending vocational school. Now, I have to say, you're gonna, I'm gonna introduce her soon, soon. Um, Ms. Morrison does a fantastic job when she sees something on an application, not just to ignore it, but to make the phone call to either the parent or to the school district to get some clarification about what's happening here. Um, so that we, you know, we really work to make sure, um, we have all the information so that we can make the best choice possible for kids.
So at the school phobic, then that's a different story from being.
Each, each case is individual, right? So that would be a discussion that you would have to.
Mr. Early, question?
I've been on this board for a few years, and it's more than fair for what the school does. They give you more than one chance to prove yourself. However, if your attendance is bad, it's gonna reflect your marks, and that's what it comes down to. All right, the school is very fair. They, they, you know, they give them every possibility. A lot of people that don't get accepted just have to roll their sleeves up and do the right thing. They won't get accepted. All right, I don't care if it's 62 points, 68 points, 70 points. One or two points isn't gonna kill us, all right? There's probably a gap of three to 10 points, and it drops off pretty quick, but I can't say it any better, and I've been involved with a lot of people that call me. Up until this year, you know, I wasn't getting any calls. This year I got four or five calls, but you know, it all comes down to attendance. And you know, uh, when, when you ask why they're absent so much, then with the Disney World, it doesn't get any simpler to figure it out from there. I just want to thank you, Superintendent, and your committee that you put together for that, because you do a great job. And I'm the first to call you if there is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren, I just, more of a comment. I do know that there are many vocational schools that have a huge waiting list. How, I, I don't understand how this is gonna help them.
I'm not sure. It's about, it's about helping. It's, it's really about making sure we're helping kids.
Okay.
It's about making sure that all kids have access. Um, part of the regulations changes, which we don't have a problem here, but part of the regulation changes is making sure that vocational schools have access to middle school students, could do tours and things like that. Luckily, we don't have that problem. Um, we have great relationships with our member communities, and I think we all think that they're all our kids, right? What's best for our kids. Um, and that's what, that has been the philosophy with the regional superintendents in this area.
Lauren, is some of this access as far as some of the more urban schools?
Um, I, I think.
Is that, I mean, the background, why they're?
I think there's some data that shows that some students are not getting accepted, so they want to make sure that we're doing what's right for kids. Right? Whittier Tech has not been on that list of schools that has, have done that. But I think it's because of the extra work. It's because of the extra details that we go through to make sure that we're making the best decision for kids.
Yep.
All right.
After you.
I just want to say, I've been on this committee for quite a while. I also was a Director of People Personnel Services at a vocational school in charge of admissions. And I can say from both ends of the spectrum that we do everything possible to offer every student a full opportunity to be able to attend this school. And I think we do a really good job. And everybody needs to be recognized for the amount of time and hard work and fairness that they put in to these decisions.
Right. It's, it's not an easy process. It's a very time-consuming, detailed-oriented process so that we can make sure that we get it right. You know, we have parents that will follow through with an appeal, and then, you know, I'm able to have those discussions, you know, and get more information, and then maybe, you know, those decisions can be changed, but there's a process, and the process has worked here. Okay. Onto the next.
Onto the next.
Okay, I have the pleasure of introducing you to Christine Morrison. I am looking, is my recommendation to have the school committee vote to the appointment of Christine Morrison as the Director of People Personnel effective of July 1st, 2021. Um, she will be filling Patty Lowell's position upon her retirement.
Sorry, I don't think we voted, uh, did we vote on the school choice?
Do we vote on the school choice?
Yeah. Yes.
Good. I'm sorry. So sorry.
I forget too.
John, I get a, point of, what a question. Under the Education Reform Act, the original one, it was 84. Is this position still under the privilege of the school?
Yes, this, the business manager and the attendance monitor.
I didn't realize, I thought it was just the business manager, the superintendent and assistant superintendent. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Christine, you wanted to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yes, hi, thank you, Ms. Lynch. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. Um, again, my name is Christine Morrison, and I have been an educator for over 20 years. I've had the pleasure for the last eight years to serve with your tech as the Director of Guidance and Admissions. And I am very fortunate to have served such wonderful students, families, and the staff here. I am really, um, looking forward to, um, trying to expand my responsibilities to better serve the community. And I would, uh, let me see. I received my Master of Education from Providence College, and, but I do want to say that I consider myself a lifelong learner and that I plan to continue my education to better serve the Whittier Tech community as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Okay, move to accept or to pretend of recommendation? Strongly a second.
Okay. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Absolutely.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
New position.
Congratulations, Christine. Thank you.
Welcome. Okay. Principal, Mr. Lagasse. Congratulations, Christine. I look forward to her being on our team. She's, uh, something else. We've been working together in the guidance office, so we're, we're excited to have her on our admin team, so thank you, school committee. Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, uh, and the rest of the school committee members. I have for you tonight uh, the 21, 22 school calendar draft. Uh, and if you can look at it, uh, if you have any questions about it, I'll answer it. Uh, as you can see, August 30th, uh, Monday, all staff will report. Then in November is, again, is our open house from one to four. Uh, and then graduation, June 2nd. Uh, and then, you know, there are a few other dates there if you have any questions. Uh, we hope, uh, Superintendent Lynch, myself, hope that this will be the only calendar for next year. Instead of having five to 10 of them, so, thank you.
Five to 10, I think it was like 100.
Yeah, about 100 back and forth, so. You need a, uh, vote on the school calendar? Do we have a motion or?
So moved?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I assume this is for us going back to real school every day, five days a week, correct?
At this time.
It looks that way.
We have a real school. It's looking at us returning to a, a sense of normal school. Yes, 100%.
Okay, uh, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you. It was great to see everybody in person. This is O'Connor, you too as well.
Let's say you as well. Thank you.
Business manager to report, care.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. As Mr. Legane has said, it is nice to see everybody in person for a change. I have a few things for you this evening. The first is the annual audit report and as we did last year. We sent it to you electronically. And the auditor also provided a cover sheet with some additional information for you. But just to summarize the key points. The opinion on the financial statements is unmodified, which is a clean opinion and the best opinion you can have. All of the reporting deadlines were met. The information that they received was accurate. The auditors found no material weaknesses and the management letter addressed one item. Uh, for a couple of years now, they have recommended that the district implement a cyber risk assessment. So we have contracted with a company who will conduct this testing and that's expected to start soon and be completed over the next. Several months, so I would ask the school committee to accept, vote to accept the audit report and answer any questions if you have any.
Better with motion.
So moved.
Second. More questions, comments?
Mr. LaBella.
Yeah, under their recommendation. They, if I can find it here. They're talking about a path. So this company is. Who do we hire?
We hired a company called Tech Edge. They also do our E-rate submission. One of the reasons that we were going with them is they do not sell any products, so their, their review. Will be very independent and also be less, hopefully less invasive and time consuming for our tech director, Mr. Williams, we hope.
So. I'm trying to hold on for a second, fifty-two pages. So, is the plan for these people to make recommendations?
They are testing our cybersecurity. We are doing so much online. And you hear about things like ransomware and, and, and cyber attacks and all that. So this is to, to test our systems. Make recommendations, make sure we're keeping things as secure as we possibly can.
If I can locate this, that's not exactly what they said. Well, page. Right here, once a review is completed. We recommend that policies and procedures be developed to mitigate each identified risk. To an acceptable level that fits with the operational determined risk tolerance.
Absolutely. So when they, when they complete the, um, the assessment. If there are additions or changes to our policies, they will make recommendations and we will bring them forward to the policy committee.
Don't you think we should take the recommendation and send it back to these guys and make sure that they agree with it? Since they're the ones that are bringing.
The auditors.
Financial guy.
We can certainly, we can certainly review it with them.
Yeah, I would recommend that.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, did we have to bid this?
No, we didn't. We did not. Okay. Yeah, I think it was nine thousand dollars, nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Yeah.
How many year contract do we have with them? I know one, one point in time, we used to hire like three to five years or something like that.
I'm sorry?
How long do, contracted with this firm?
Oh, with the auditors? I believe it was a three-year contract with a two-year extension.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I think we're in the extension, right?
No.
Not yet?
Not yet. I think they're, we're only in year two. I think we have a third year and then I would come back to you to approve the. You may have approved the extension when you voted it.
I think so.
I think you did. Any other questions? Okay, we'll keep you posted as how that goes. For your information, we have bid results. Successful vendors were all the lowest responsible bidders.
We have to prove this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We gotta, we gotta motion and we have a second. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, the successful vendors were all the lowest responsible bidders. We had a contract out for janitorial services. It is a three-year contract with Complete Cleaning Company and the total contract amount is one million, twenty thousand dollars. We had two successful bidders for school supplies. The first one was for office classroom and copier paper supplies. That is a true year contract with WB Mason, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. And then finally, we had a Stratasys JSS system three D printer. It's a large piece of equipment for our CAD shop. And the successful bidder was Advanced Education Technologies Incorporated for eighty-one thousand. I'm sorry, eighty-four thousand, one hundred and one dollars and that is funded through the Mass Skills Capital Grant. Are there any questions on the bid results? Mr. Early.
The company that got the, um, bid, are they the current company in there now?
Yes, for the cleaning, yes.
Thank you. Oh, one other thing. Do they have hourly rates or that, how do they do it?
They bid on an annual contract, a three-year contract. This company tends to divide it by three, but, um, they bid on the three-year total.
I told you, you don't have any hourly rates.
I believe there is an hourly rate stated in there if we have to use any additional staffing.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. LaBella.
Is this, is this three-year contract, uh, each equal each year?
No, the million twenty is divided by three years. That's the total cost of the contract.
It was not so much the first year.
No, they divided equally.
They do. Then I got another question on these supplies. If, are these all bulk grades?
As, yes, we, what we do is we fill out a very extensive form where we put down the amount of quantity that we expect to purchase. And then they submit their bids back and then it's tabulated to see what the total is.
So even if we buy ten reams of paper.
Yes.
We're, we're getting a bulk rate.
Correct. They quote the price per item.
As if they will.
Based on the quantity, like, so what is a case of paper? They, they base it on the price of a case of paper. So if you've got one case of paper or five thousand cases of paper, it's the same price.
Five thousand price.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, and finally, um, we're requesting a transfer, an approval of a transfer in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars. From our excess and deficiency fund to our stabilization fund. At the end of FY twenty, the Department of Revenue certified nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. In excess and deficiency funds for Whittier. After this transfer, we will have ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars in the E and D account. But we anticipate that this account will be replenished by funds that will remain in the operating budget at the close of this fiscal year. So in order to do that, we are requesting that the school committee increase the FY twenty-one general fund operating budget. To twenty-six million, seven hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. The revenue for this increase will come from the excess and deficiency account and will result in no change to our member municipality assessments.
Move the, move the business manager's recommendation for E and D account.
Second.
Questions, comments, Mr. Uh, Mr. LaBella?
So, are you anticipating the E and D account to get back to nine hundred thousand?
I'm anticipating that the E and D account will be probably moved back to nine hundred thousand when DOE, DOR certifies the end of this year.
You're saying we're gonna have a nine hundred thousand dollar surplus?
Well, as you recall, we cut a lot of positions from the budget because we were anticipating significant cuts. In state funding and we also did not have students here every day of the week, so. The supply accounts were much less than we anticipated, so I am expecting a larger than normal balance at the end of the year.
Wow.
Do we have a chiller account?
I have a question. Um, we haven't talked about the building project. How are we doing financially with dealing with the feasibility study and where are we at with that? Even though this is not in relation to, well, in some ways it's in relation to the E and D account because we may have to move money back and forth, so. Where are we with all of that?
So if I can answer that, um, we are hopeful. That MSBA will invite us into the feasibility stage in June. So that's why it's really important for us to have the money in our stabilization account to be able to pay for the feasibility study. Um, without having to go to our districts, um, for an assessment, so. Um, I think we were very conservative this school year. Um, with our, our staffing and our supplies. And I think it will work out for us for next year as we go through the feasibility, um, study piece.
Thing else, Mr. LaBella?
Do we have a account and all reimbursable? Uh, supplies from the federal government?
An account of reimbursable.
Yeah, all the PPE money.
Yes, we, we, a, a lot of that was funded through a grant that we received that was almost four hundred thousand dollars. Some of it has come out of the district budget, but that was something when we bought it all last August and we reduced our budget. We had no idea that we were going to be getting those grants. So we were fortunate that we were able to purchase all of those items out of the grant.
Right. So, if this is no change to the municipalities, what are we gonna do with this nine hundred thousand?
It goes into the E and D account and it is available.
No, the one you take, you're taking out this and putting it in the budget.
In the stabilization.
It, it just, it, it has to go into the budget just for the sole purpose of accounting. It's an accounting mechanism. You increase the budget, it goes into the budget and immediately flows out of the budget into stabilization. It's just the way that.
Stabilization, then it end up being.
The stabilization, um, will probably be very close to what it was before the transfer we made for. Uh, anticipated costs for MSBA. I think it will probably be about a million one.
Then we still have eight hundred thousand in the school choice. So we can, we can build another sports field if you want.
No, I don't think so.
It is a gorgeous sports field.
I think we need a new baseball. Anyway, that's another subject. Okay.
Okay, we all set to vote? Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Committee reports, committee chairperson, junior annual agenda items, uh, policy updates.
I'll be bringing my first reading.
Okay.
For remote meetings to the next meeting, but other than that, I have, I'm not aware of any other new policies.
MESS, MESS joint venture.
I haven't heard anything.
Are they having a conference this year?
They're having the conference the first week of June.
The first week of June?
Yeah, something like the third through the sixth.
Of this year?
Yes, yep. I think it's listed as in-person and remote.
Oh, I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, no.
In June?
No, November, November. No, November.
Alright, so we're a few minutes away from that.
Yeah, but we have to vote on a, on, we have to vote.
Delegate in June. That's what, that's what that's there for. You vote on a delegate so she can get the paperwork out in July.
So we have to send it in, okay. Are they, is there any discussion on whether or not they are attempting to make an in-person conference this year?
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying I found some literature that, that says it will be in-person and, um.
And remote, yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, the superintendent evaluation. That can be found on the Google Classroom. But you have any questions on that?
So do we have to go into Google Classroom and fill out a form? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, just like the other.
And what date do you want it for? For the next meeting?
Yeah, if we could get it for next month.
Yeah.
By June one, June one.
Okay.
That way they will have their results for the, uh, June meeting.
Alright, June one.
Uh, appointment of subcommittees. Lisa sent out the, the list. Everything seems to be. Pretty full. Basically, even though, uh, if anybody wants any changes or anything, take a look at it and, uh, go over it next month. Are there any questions on that? Uh, subcommittee reports, executive, we have not met. Is there any need for a meeting?
At this point, I would say.
Instructional personnel.
We have not met and again, it's similar to my report from last month. We will be looking to meet in early September. Maybe even before school starts, but we'll see.
Uh, plant operations, I don't know if there's any need for a meeting.
At this point, no.
Okay, everything seems to be. Good operating order. Uh, salary negotiations, Mr. Early.
I don't think we need a meeting right now, do we?
We do, for the new director of people personnel, we need to negotiate a contract for her.
Alright, why don't you shut one up?
Okay. Want it during the day or at night, in-person or remote?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Uh, policy, Mr. Early.
Yes, we bring, uh, I believe in the packet was the minutes of the April fourteenth, uh, policy subcommittee. So we need a vote to accept for the files. I move that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on that? Vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Also, Mr. Chairman, we've been reviewing that, that night and this evening, we had a meeting on a remote procedure of participation. We've been doing that now for, for many months, but we wanna formalize it. It's been around since, I believe. Twenty twelve was the first, uh, comment from the Attorney General on that and then again, we reviewed it in two thousand seventeen. And it's up again, uh, and we believe it's time to, to add this to our policy. It will be listed on the BEDL remote participation procedures. And it'll be in your packet for next month. Please take a look at it, because we'll be having our first vote. Uh, the first reading in June and the second reading in July slash August, depending how we do with vacation time. So it's basically the rules and regulations and the procedures used for distance learning, or I should say, remote learning. And, um, what, what needs to transpire during a meeting and obligations on both the, the person. Not onsite and the, and the folks here. Quorum has to be, uh, reached and so on, so. Um, it'll be before you in your next packet, please read it and we'll be ready to vote in June. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The, uh, meeting dates, uh, regular school committee meeting will be June ninth at six thirty PM. New business, there is no new business posted and there is no executive session posted.
Mr. Chairman, move to adjourn.
Roll call vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
And Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Adjourned.